Mean to order, if you can stand, we'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation which under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice around.
Call the roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Arms.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Legend.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Any additions over there?
None.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of August 24th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion on that? Terry, not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Finance and budget, got the accounts payable and the accounts, additional accounts payable listing there, do you have any questions, ask Carla? Jenna, I'm gonna ask you, cause Sean's busy, is that, uh, Labor Pond, is that the last payment on that? Or we still got some money we holding on that?
Um, for the contractors, that is the last payment on that. But we do have, um, we met with the contractor, we do have a sign, a sign slip saying that he's going to come back at the end of the month and do the receiving.
Carla, I have a question, uh, this annexation for Barricade Estates, City Parkland in ten years, what are we paying for that? I mean, what's that for, I guess, is that legal fees or what?
So, there's taxes that then when it's annexed into the city that then goes back to, uh, part of the, um, annexation agreement with High Forests is that we pay the taxes that they're losing out for ten years, like you're receiving property. And then it goes on a percentage rate basis down.
Down, every year down.
Yeah, and I got the whole, the whole, um...
I was just curious, I didn't know what that was.
Any other questions? You're not looking for motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us on to motions and general business, and first item tonight under your motions to general business will be the 2022-2023 sheriff contract approval. Homestead County has provided us with the 2022-23 law enforcement contracts, the contract amounts for the patrol contract are $575,242 for 2022 and $708,492 for 2023. The city's cops contract is $112,288 for '22, $115,657 for 2023. This schedule reflects working out a compromise review of the city council and sheriff's department goals. The council has indicated that they will review the contracts during the coming year and have expressed the idea of holding a public forum or forums for additional citizen and community input on future ideas and direction for future law enforcement coverage. The contract amount for 2022 has been included in the 2022 preliminary budget, which is set for recommendation by council approval at the September 4th regular meeting. So, the council actually requested will be to approve the 2022-23 law enforcement service agreements between the city of Stewartville and the Homestead County and community oriented policing officer agreement. Do we have any discussion or questions?
I think I'm clear on the contract, but I'm absolutely gonna go on record, uh, for this, to clear this up, I, I think. First off, I'd like to thank the Homestead County Sheriff's Office for the hard work the last month and a half. I thought this was a brutal negotiation that started with no negotiations, um, but you guys, I recognize the need for increased law enforcement, which I supported from the beginning, believe it or not, and we got, I, I'm very happy at the product you guys came up with, so I'm hoping everything goes real smooth tonight. The, uh, the hard part here is some of the misinformation that was given out there, and I don't understand how any kind of negotiation of something of this importance could be turned into a, into a personal attack on a family or on a couple people. And it, it's disinformation that was thrown out on social media, I didn't like the fact that, um, I felt like our hands were tied when this first came. I thought, I'm open to more law enforcement in Stewartville, these guys had a lot of questions, I filled them in on my decision on, or my view of it, um, but I wasn't sure that we could swallow a forty percent increase in the law enforcement side of it, which is why I think we negotiated to the twenty percent each of the two years. It was unfortunate that due to no negotiations whatsoever at the beginning and being, uh, just the conversations that we had, we decided to look for other areas that we could possibly provide law enforcement to our community. The only other one in Homestead County is the city of Rochester. I happen to work for the city of Rochester, but we decided to look into it. At them meetings, suddenly people came out of the blue that haven't seen the meetings before and questioned my integrity, in my opinion, from what I heard after the fact, not at the meeting, but they wanted me to abstain from a vote because they felt that there is, I had some impropriety and some inside agreement with the city of Rochester, which is not the case. Uh, I did hear from a few people after the fact that it was mentioned that some people were throwing around, um, tru- mistruths again, that I had some inside deal, and it's not, I don't appreciate my integrity being brought out. This ended up being the most stressful negotiation I've ever gone through, and it's the one thing that I care about more than anything, which is law enforcement within my community. So I'm hoping we go forward from there. I, I, it's, I can't stress enough how inappropriate it is to do personal attacks on social media, some of which I got screenshots of, some of which I heard from other people, it was done in secret chat rooms that I had no access to, and there's obviously a reason for that. That's, there's no place for anything like that in a negotiation, as important as this, and I said negotiation, cause it should be that. And we are well aware moving forward, um, the, the sheriff is correct in that they did mention for several years that we'd have to prob, we were gonna have to increase our budget, so none of that's a mistruth. The difference is, it wasn't clear to us, we thought it meant possibly bringing on a school resource officer, not two new cops, and don't potentially send two more, and we don't know where we're gonna go down the road, that's why it's important to get everybody else's, um, statements and what people want for their city in here. With that said, since the, uh, city of Rochester is no longer involved in this vote tonight, I am not abstaining in my vote, I am absolutely gonna vote in this, and I wanna make sure that it gets done tonight, that's why I'm afraid of a two-two vote otherwise. So with that said, I will personally, I would like to make the motion that we do accept this contract, and that we do move forward with the terms as listed here. And I'll open it up for anybody else to say whatever you need.
Any other questions or discussions, any questions for the sheriff, or any discussion on what you see or don't see or understand in the contract? We've had Bill get back and forth a couple times with the sheriff.
Kevin, the one thing that, uh, that's still, that is getting to me is that we had a cop or two, or deputies or two. If we had deputy, deputy, one deputy, two deputies, keep the, the cops contract, there should, to me, if, if you, if the county is staffed right, with the right amount of deputies, like you say, and we're adding these extra deputies, to me, there should be always one cop in town, they should never be two cops leaving town for, unless it's like a massive incident, there should be never two cops leaving the city.
There are emergency situations.
No, I know, but they're not, not that big. I mean, there could be, but I mean, I'm, I'm just saying very rarely should we have both cops leave the city, leave the city limits, cause these are extra cops that are gonna be on the fore, on the payroll, that we're paid for because the, the sheriff's department thinks the city of Stewartville needs them, not the county, the city.
Kevin?
Is that a question?
Yeah, I mean, cause they're, and both, both these...
Are you making a statement or a question?
Well, kind of both, I guess. I mean, it's, it's just my question, cause at both these contracts, I, I understand that when there's incidents that, that they have to leave, but if we have two cop, two dep, two extra deputies per se, to me, it should be in the contract that says never more than one deputy leave. We should always have a deputy in town.
I get it.
You get where I'm...
I think so.
Okay. It's, it's hard to...
First of all, to keep doing patient marks, first of all, they're not extra, it's necessary. That's why they're doing this.
Yup.
When we started talking about this, they're not extra, please don't refer to them as being extra.
I'm, I'm just saying extras is that they're not, they're not on your force currently, or now, because there're gonna be two more, there're two more additions, there you go, thank you.
To agree to that point, and add that, extra or additions, and then we'll be dedicated to Stewartville when they're assigned here. Um, however, and to remind you, and my neighbor listening, that city Stewartville is paying for the salary of that deputy while they're here. County levy is paying for the, the additional, everything else, squad guard, training, the , uh, para, the FICA, all the extra benefit things that go into that. So the county does have a right, as much as Stewartville does, to assign those deputies and have those deputies do what needs to be done. Now, my promise to you is, that yeah, their focus when they're assigned here in Stewartville, or that shift, is gonna be to the city of Stewartville. But like the Stewartville Fire Department, which responds, if there is a critical incident or medical, or whatever it may be, a critical incident can be, I think, domestic to murder, um, and there could be some other things in between, car crashes, um, you know, we have County Road One out here to our, to our east, you know, some very serious crashes that happen out there. Um, I think it would be very difficult to say that, or for anyone to demand that when there's people in need, either injured or worse, uh, potentially on the rank of, of death, that a deputy who's five miles away can't respond there because they are assigned here. Yes, we're gonna do everything we can to not make them, or allow them to leave, and monitor that as much as possible, as much as we've ever done. However, and, and I, I say this with some passion, because years ago, um, not that long ago, I was a member of the State Law Enforcement Memorial Association, I was on their board, and there was an officer shot and killed in a small city outside of a larger city. And there was some stuff going on, some politics and other difficult plays were happening. And officers from that larger city were not allowed to leave to assist the county and that smaller city looking for the suspect's murder, or the suspect in that case who was murdered, who was officer. Um, I hope that we never hit that point, that the city of Stewartville understands that, uh, and respects us to the point that if we see a need that is a critical incident, something like that, where it requires two immediate deputies to respond, that you will understand that and accept that. We're gonna do everything we can, and they said, we're gonna do everything we can to not see those deputies leaving town on a routine or a daily basis, I don't see that happening. Um, but again, the other thing that goes back to my early days in our television here, that when you worked in Stewartville, knowing even thinking about receipt, um, uh, first responder Stewartville, first response goes down there, and I know there's, there's contracts and there's agreements between the city and, and there, I don't even know what all that entails, but we know that, that if there's a critical incident, we know that, uh, with an agreement, we understand mutual aid of sorts, with modern county, that we responded to receipt for bad crashes and other things like that.
Good.
And our deputies have been the first ones there, and when modern county issue uphill, they go back. So, please respect that that's what we're gonna do.
Good.
And understand that, uh, I think with the contract and with the way that, uh, the payment is, is, uh, contracted and structured in the sense that we, the sheriff's office, have that latitude to make some of those decisions on a daily basis, but do know that our focus is always to be on Stewartville.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, stay up there, would you please?
Sure.
I have a question about, do we still have the, the first year, are we still calling it the cops program, or is that the, the power shift deputy?
Well, the deputy on is gonna be a real power shift position, but he's gonna do what he can to continue working in some of those community policing needs that you have, just understand that it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be showing up in here at eight o'clock in the morning, he's gonna be showing up later in the day, so that we do have that coverage later into evening and into early morning hours. So, will he still do those, some of those jobs, the ones that he can? Yes, um, but if it's something that needs to get done in the daytime prior to him coming on shift, uh, it's gonna be whichever deputy is in town.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, our, uh, what I'm wanting to know about for sure is some of our, some of our extra that we get, and you've explained it to me, is our code enforcement, ordinance and stuff.
Yes, absolutely.
We're still gonna, we can rely on that when it comes to snowbirds and things like that, we can still...
Oh yeah, now maybe he handles the same there, as far as the alert goes off, you get the alert, and that's, that's how they notify? Yeah, I, I think it should, I mean, generally, you know, seven, eight hours.
Working during those...
Yeah, they go on, uh, six or seven at night, and then they go out, and he just gets it, and then he notifies the deputies there, so... And in this case, in, you know, half the time, uh, after the alert, it'll be working, so it'll be on duty, um, so that shouldn't have any...
Just as long as I know where to notify, as long as I understand there's still a person there.
Yeah, and, and if it's on his off time, and he gets that alert, we wanna switch that and add someone else to that, I don't know if it...
It's usually been on and off time anyways.
Yes, I mean, I get them too, right at my own house, so if I know he's not working or something like that, all I can do is check my phone, and it's just simple for me to call the on-duty sergeant and say, hey, that's what...
I just didn't know if I needed to call dispatch, you go through that to get the on-duty, you got the...
I don't think we're gonna do that, we'll monitor that, so that works, yeah. So yeah, your, your code stuff is gonna be the same, um, however, it just kinda depends on if Jason Downs, when he's working, and if it's not him, I expect that he'll pass it on.
But we can count on whoever's in town taking care of it.
Yeah, and, yeah. Yeah.
Other questions? Jeremiah?
The, the one thing that I want, um, maybe some assurance on, is, is aside from the critical incidents, as you call it, um, when, when a deputy is assigned to Stewartville that are in Stewartville, they're not north of town on the highway picking up speeders, there's plenty of speeders on Main Street in town, you know, I mean, it...
Again, again, it all, it all has, it's all relative in the sense to us, um, we're definitely, we're living in a situation right now across the state, last year, we had more fatalities in our state than we've seen in the last seven, ten years.
Right.
Um, so again, please allow us a little latitude, I'm not gonna promise you that, because we know that, you know, where the city line is, if it's a fifty-five zone there on this side of the I-90 bridge, um, what's it gonna take, another two hundred yards from here into the city, the problem's gonna go pretty fast. So, if we can get them to slow down priorly, before they get down here, and take somebody out at the stoplight, or take somebody out of the corner, um, I think that's pretty decent enforcement in my opinion, so, um, I'm not gonna guarantee you and promise you that we won't have a deputy sitting out by the bridge or I-90 in those situations, and again, it may not be just your Stewartville deputy, it might be that we were doing a saturation of sorts and using another deputy to come down, um, to help with that, and, and work on those things, so, um, again, I'm not gonna promise you that we won't do that, because I think that's good enforcement.
Okay, thanks. Josh?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna compromise, cause that was the biggest sticking point, at least in my mind, is how do we put that into the budget when it's, when it's a forty percent increase, so, I appreciate you guys working with us.
Thank you. I guess that, that man here, was just one other thing I laughed, you know, talked ago about it, but I got off the phone about an hour ago, um, exchanged some email or some phone messages over the day. We still need to do more discussions, and I read and, I heard what you were saying there about forums and looking into the future and that kind of thing. Um, that's great, because I don't think we are at a place where we, we say, okay, this is good, now we can sit for another twenty years and we're fine, I think there's more that has to be talked about. Uh, my concern is we're, for this year, this, these two years, '22 and '23, we're going to this power shift plan. Channel A power shift is two PM to AM, it fluctuates some depending on events or whatever, but that, let's, let's assume that's the general plan that we're going with. That means that from two AM to two PM, there's still only one deputy here in Stewartville, and we know that critical incidences, mental health calls, people with crisis, domestics and all other things, don't just stop at two PM, or two AM and start up again at two PM, they're all day long. And so, as we put in the email to Mr. Schimmel, a month ago or whenever it was, um, we need to be talking about '24, '25 and beyond, uh, because really Stewartville, in our opinion, needs full coverage of two deputies, twenty-four seven, which would basically mean adding, if we can compromise on that again, one more in '24, one more in '25. Um, a similar process if we're going out, to get to that point that there will be two deputies on base shift, two deputies on base shift down in Stewartville, and however we work out community office position, that's my hope, is the city and the school district can finally come together and make that happen as well. And I think there's somewhat of an alleviation on your budgets if the school districts, uh, decides to step up and is not the only school district in Homestead County that has a deputy working on the issues that they do, and great what they do in our schools with the kids, so, um, I just wanna make that mention and make sure that everybody agrees it, because we need to have this conversation moving forward.
Yes, we do, and part of the reason we wanna continue on with these conversations, I'll go on record saying, I'm going to continue to look at our own force and other options. We're gonna look at every option we have available to us, and we always will, because when it gets to a certain point at, at budget time, there's gotta be a break-even point eventually. We've had this discussion, you and I have, and we all have.
Right.
You keep saying we can't, I'm not saying we can, but we're gonna keep looking at those options.
Yeah.
It's something, we have to do it for our citizens, I hope you understand that, if I told you I was gonna cut you forty percent, you'd get pretty excited if I said I was gonna do a forty percent cut.
That's service.
And I guarantee you this, if I went to the paper right now and said, Mark, put the headlines in next week, I want a forty percent raise for this council and this mayor, we really hear something, and it doesn't amount to nothing. But, it's a big ask, we glad we could compromise on it, I'm glad Councilman Anderson said it much better and more correctly than I would've said some of it, but I'm glad we've come to this compromise, I, I can't, Kevin, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm in total agreement with it, you know I'm not, we, we've had these discussions before, but we're gonna vote on it tonight, and hopefully the answer's what you need to hear.
So, um, I just, uh, lost where I was saying. Oh, yeah, you know, we, we get to that point of adding '24 and '25, um, just from our projections, and I think we have a cherry in that, because we, we talk about this stuff.
Yup.
Um, but even with that, um, adding the way we do, in the sense that city Stewartville pays only for the deputies' wages, county levy, county cover, everything else, um, even with that, the city Stewartville isn't paying what most comparison cities of Cassin and Lake City and Princeton are paying for full-time law enforcement with the same numbers.
I understand that, but we've also looked at other comparison cities that are about our size, even the metro area that are paying a comparable price.
Now, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor, when we asked our, having those negotiations and those discussions, I'd like to see those numbers.
You certainly will.
Do what you asked for.
You certainly will.
I'd like to see that.
You certainly will.
I don't know if that's, that's totally accurate, so, just talking about that.
We will.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other discussion? Okay, the motion has been put to the table that we agreed to the '22, '23 contract, the way it was presented to us. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote, I don't know if you've even done one of them yet or not, but I'm gonna call you by name and you'll give me your vote. Josh?
Aye, boy, yes.
Brent?
Vote yes.
Craig?
I'm yes.
Jeremiah?
Yes.
The mayor is a no. So it passes four to one. So that is behind us now, so we can move on to the next part of business tonight, which is the limited hunt request. Now, just before we go any farther, Kevin and Terry, I'll give you the option of staying or leaving if you want. If you wanna stay for, we got quite a bit on the agenda, if you wanna stay for it, that's fine, if you don't, that's fine too. All right, limited hunt request, which would be an exception to our city ordinance. Staff has been working with Lucas Jordan and Riverview Greens Golf Course regarding a limited hunt. This would entail hunting, shotgun geese in the area outlined in the attached mapping, which we have. The purpose of the hunt is to control damage on the golf course from the geese, other options are oiling eggs. As safety is naturally a great concern, Lucas Jordan's proposing using number four shot, which damage would occur no farther than forty yards, or number eight shot, which damage would occur no farther than twenty-five yards, which is outlined on the mapping. Hours of the hunt would be from seven AM to noon, Riverview Greens Golf Course would not allow anyone on the course at that time. Everyone within Golf U Villies would be notified by a flyer that the hunt would be happening, and that way they'd be informed. Lucas, would you step up to the podium, please, or I think we're gonna have a couple questions. You've come to an agreement with, uh, Dan Hammer and Brulee on the Riverview Greens?
Yeah.
I guess one of the questions I'd like to ask you before we go any farther, how many people do you propose being out there?
I have a group of seven.
And this would be every day?
No, I, that's at max, um, depending on who can make it per day, like, we have a guy that does different things on the weekends, people work, you know, so at max, I have a group of seven, and the first time Dan Hammer, I think, would like to come, so there's possibly eight, but I highly doubt that would happen, just that's max.
Would you be a senior, the, the season is from what, September?
Uh, it started September, what was it, fourth? Fourth?
Until?
September twenty-ninth this year.
Are you planning, I'm planning on hunting every day?
No, it would just be like, uh, so once you hunt an area, like a field or a pond, it'll kick the birds off for like, uh, now, there's no specific time, but a week or two or more, and then when it loads back up and creates a problem again, maybe go back and then, be like, I would say a monkey park.
So basically, you're sitting behind the, the clubhouse all along those ponds there and shooting towards the golf course, right?
Correct. And I just wanna add, I don't, I think, we might have shot bigger than four shot, but like, uh, at that rate, the, the damage rate would be no more than sixty yards, it might be BB, I just didn't know if that would be another problem.
You're shooting towards where, the metal park? I'm a little confused on where they're, cause you have townhouses there.
You'd be shooting away from...
So that's the clubhouse in that picture?
Yeah, so then Metal Park's right back here.
You're shooting right at your house.
Yeah, Metal Park's right here.
Right.
Place that right there.
They'll teach you to chew them kids out back there in the parking lot all the time.
There's no way she all is gonna get that far.
Right, well, and there's woods in between there and everything too, I mean...
I, I did reach out to the city of Stewartville, because they allow that in, in their community, um, and he said that it, it does work well, they actually hire, hire a guide service that comes in, and then they pick their people from there. Um, the only thing, they're disappointed that it didn't keep the geese away forever, like, they do come back, so, um, I would recommend if you did this, that it would just be for this year, and you would reevaluate every year, if there's others that wanna do it, they would have to come before the city council too, it's just not a one and done FICA thing.
This, only question I had is, does DNR have to approve this at all or not, since it's in city limits or not? And there's houses around?
I was with the DNR and didn't get a return call, um, but, um, Becker did work to, just to see what they're, and I think he sent me the agreements that they used, um, this, this is a city-run golf course in Becker, so they actually had, you know, their attorneys for the other, like, reason.
I do know, just a little bit of research I was able to do on this subject this afternoon, um, that if you look out for, um, goose population control, this is the preferred method that the DNR has, if, assuming that it's, it's a safe method. Um, and I'd, I'd be interested in knowing if, if they got back to you on that.
I guess we, I would like to at least request, we have the names and addresses and phone numbers of everyone that's gonna be at the hunt.
Absolutely, I can get them, I just don't have them right now.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
We have approved you.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying.
So you'll hunt from seven to noon, or that's not...
Uh, it's just a vague timeframe, I can't control geese.
I don't believe...
Yeah, I just didn't know.
What's our noise ordinance on the weekends?
Um, it, it varies with whether it's...
Well, shots.
But at least seven AM.
Even on the weekend?
On Sunday and Sunday night, I believe.
So this would just be like a Saturday?
They prefer Sundays or weekdays, so I'm shooting for Sundays, cause it's easier to get everybody together on the weekend.
So we need to give them an exception on Sunday to start shooting earlier?
If you do a limited hunt, it'll, in court... If you do a limited hunt, it'll incorporate.
Would they be able to let the city hall know? Could you let city hall know when you're going to do it, like that Friday if you're going to go Sunday? So if people are calling, they can say what it is?
Yeah, I can do that.
So maybe some people calling?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So how many times would this happen? Because like September to December is long.
Correct. Honestly, I don't know. I haven't watched the golf course like on a yearly basis because I've never hunted it, but I assume they wouldn't go there most of the times free, so I can't guarantee you that, but.
They do, but it doesn't be on the grass. So they're there. They're there. Lessons. So much, there's no one.
Good question. Question coming from.
Okay.
What's done with the dead geese?
What's what?
What's done with the dead geese?
I think they're going to eat them all, aren't you?
Yes, sir. We take care of them. We'll rest them out, eat them.
Have a smoker or anything? When can I come over?
Anytime, honestly.
I think that's one thing DNR does really frown on, is just shooting and wasting animals.
Yeah, there's a law called law on waste. And it's like, yeah, you get some federal offense. So prison will do that.
Is that for hunting every day, whether it's at the golf course or someplace else, somebody uses the geese they take?
You better pay attention because we just renewed the contract with the officers.
So at the sake of not being here all night, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the limited hunt, assuming that everything's approved by DNR. And the only other thing I would question is, did we decide, would you, you would write it all in there that if we had to change the noise ordinance on Sunday morning?
It will, so yeah, we'll have what limited hunt entails and it'll be the ordinance changes, whether it's, you know, obviously no hunting in city limits and then noise ordinance and that, just like we do with our dance.
All right, so I'll make that motion and assuming that we, that everything is good to go with DNR.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Okay, Lucas.
I appreciate it.
Just let the city know, just so they're aware.
Absolutely. You have a mind if I take off?
Nope. My wife's thinking the same thing. You pick me up after if you want to go.
Have a good one, guys.
Next item under general business is Bear Cave Estates. Al and Peggy Chiock have submitted preliminary plat request for their townhome development. This project will be run as a planned residential development under our zoning ordinance. Bill Anderson is in the crowd tonight, engineer in this project and will be in attendance to walk us through the subdivision plan. City engineer Jenna has submitted her review for compliance as per city ordinances, with most items being minor. The planning commission held a public hearing on September seventh. They are recommending approval of the plat, excuse me, subject to the engineer's review letter. So Bill, let's hear from you quick.
Okay. That will be good. That is a drawing of the proposed subdivision. I can go over there and point if I need to, but the gist of it is we have nine duplex units and twelve single units. The, because it's a planned residential development, the criteria for a PRD is the percentage of coverage. In other words, the requirement is that you don't have more than forty-five percent of the site covered in the structures and we just have twenty-two percent of the site covered. You need to have forty-five percent of the site as open space and we're at about seventy percent of the site is open space. And of that open space, half needs to be usable, common space that the residents can use together, like a rec space. And of that, we're over seventy percent of that. So we met the criteria for that residential development. The units are basically, there's sixteen foot spacing. They have, everybody's got a separate driveway and everything. The storage pond or the stormwater pond there at the bottom that serve this phase and a future phase if there's, and the plan is, there's a temporary turnaround on the north end there now, but in the future that would go on and occur out to the planned developments, general development plan that goes further west. In that area, there would be a few more units, but this pond also would take care of those units that would come down the storm sewer into this street. The paved city street, you told the sidewalks, driveways, setbacks are just like a residential twenty-foot setback, I believe, in the front. And then individual yards, you can see the lot lines, individual spaces are set up so people can do patios and so on, but the common space is in behind there and behind on the west and the south. The sewer water service would come off the trunk sewer line that would be along the east side of the property and stubbed out to the south for future extension and stubbed out to the north for any future extension going that way. Really, that's about it. Green space, single US and duplex units.
Yeah, you only see minor things that need to be changed? Or are you pretty well in agreement approvals?
Yep. Hearing one approval.
I'm lost. Any questions for Bill? Hearing no questions, look for council action to be approval of the preliminary plat for Bear Cave Estates.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion is second. One last time, is there any discussion or questions for Al or anybody? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, that also carries. All right, you get to stay for the whole meeting, though. You get to stay for the whole meeting, man.
Oh, okay. Did I ask for permission?
Next item. The Schuman's Business Park, fourth. The Schuman Family Trust has submitted a preliminary plat request for the next phase of the business park. Alex, the engineer who's on the project, will be in attendance to walk us through any questions on the subdivision plan. City engineer Jenna has submitted her review for compliance as per city ordinances, with most items being very minor. However, she has recommended a thirty-three foot right-of-way at the north boundary for future development street. But it's her recommendation that both property owners should contribute to the sixty-six foot right-of-way needed for a future street. Now, the Schuman Family Trust is not in favor of granting the right-of-way, noting the value of the land lost is significant and would be estimated at a hundred thousand dollars. The planning commission held a public hearing on September seventh. They are recommending approval of the plat, subject to the engineer's review letter, excluding the right-of-way. It was felt that the Schuman family has already dedicated two streets getting to the northern property, Schuman Drive and Second Avenue Northwest. So Alex?
Sure. Can you get the breakdown of it? So this is, so Schuman Drive is along the left-hand side there. Highway sixty-three is the right text, so I guess I can show you guys. So Highway sixty-three is here. The old Schuman home site is located here, so this is all still going to be within the Schuman Family Trust. Well, I'm sorry, not this property, but this will still be there. So we're subdividing a lot to the west of that and east of Schuman Drive. Sewer, pretty typical cul-de-sac. It's designed a little bit oddly shaped as to serve an industrial park, so it's designed so that a semi-truck, a full-size semi-truck can turn around inside of that cul-de-sac if it be. The sewer and water will be installed within the cul-de-sac. Services to lots two and three will be from the cul-de-sac, public utilities. Lots one and four already have sewer services with the Schuman Drive project and lot five will have to install separate sewer service and water service. Lots one and five are already spoken for. They already have purchase agreements in place for those two lots. I guess that's about it, but I guess total land is a little bit under twenty acres. Cul-de-sac is roughly five hundred feet in length, so. We've got a contractor on board and ready to start as soon as we have those minor grading or plan requirements taken care of with Jenna. With regards to the thirty-three foot easement in the north, so I'd just kind of like to remind everybody that when the Serow did originally go in, there were conversations with the landowner to the north of this property to try and get that road alignment directly on the property boundary that was with them and with where the Peterbilt site currently sits. At that time, they didn't want to take part in anything that was going on and no access was going to be granted on their property. So now that's, you know, things have changed, things are kind of turning around and there's some interest in their property, then now they're trying to request a property from the Schuman family. Right now, we do have lots five spoken for. There is a purchase agreement in place, so I guess if there are any discussions and anything that wants to proceed in the future, I would just request that that would be taken up with the future landlord, that the city or whoever, actually it should be between the private developers, the city shouldn't be the one applying for the easement. It should be the developer responsible for the road and for active acquiring the right-of-way. So we'd ask that the private parties would then be responsible for the negotiation of the right-of-way and not the city and not Schuman Family Trust donating the right-of-way this time.
Any questions for Alex? Question for Mark. Any questions?
What was the general consensus that year? Yeah, at the B and Z, I think the biggest thing was the cost of that right-of-way, I think.
Since a little over a hundred thousand dollars is about the cost of that right-of-way would be just for this stretch. So any future right-of-way on Schuman Trust property to the east would be of additional value and be more significant as it's proximity to sixty-three is obviously a little bit closer.
All right, if you know further questions or discussion, we'll look for a motion about the preliminary plat for the Schuman Business Park, proposed subdivision.
I'll make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
That's without the right-of-way, you're saying?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item is a variance request. B and Z was busy last night. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Katie and Chris Slaister applied for a six-foot variance from the ten-foot between-structures requirement per section thirteen seventy-five point oh five accessory structures. Slaisters are planning to replace their deck that was built in nineteen seventy-five without a permit by the previous owner. The deck is a fourteen by sixteen and they are unable to economically move it due to the configuration of their patio door. The planning commission held a public hearing on September seventh. It's recommending approval of the variance. Questions or discussion? Josh, you guys looked it all over and thought this would be all right?
Yeah, and basically what they want to do is, it says in there rebuild the deck, but they want to use better materials and if they had moved it so they would hit the ten feet requirement, they would have to move their patio door like into their bathrooms, basically, so. And I had asked the question, what would they have to do in nineteen seventy-five? And they would just would have had to get a variance like this, so nothing would really change.
Any other questions or discussion on this? All right, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the six-foot variance as requested.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next item, resolution to transfer to the city. As you are aware, the city has expressed interest in taking over County Road number thirty-five and right-of-way from Homestead County. This will help its future developments and placing their entrances and also will help with keeping the established driveways. Public Works Hale has pointed out this is a great time to take on the roadway as it was just reconstructed in two thousand nineteen. As part of this agreement, the county will pay the city fifty percent, which is twenty-five thousand fifty dollars of the future chip ceiling cost, and will be made within thirty days of the transfer. The transfer agreement between the county and city is attached, along with the resolution to accepting the transfer, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the documents. We're going to need two motions on this. First would be the approval of agreement between Homestead County and the city of Sturville. Any discussion on that one or questions? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Second motion will be approval of resolution twenty-twenty-one dash, a resolution accepting the transfer of jurisdiction and right-of-way of a segment of County State Eight Highway thirty-five from Homestead County. Questions or discussion?
How far outside go again?
Out to the bridge.
Bridge, right? Off the ninety, right, ninety bridge? Right before the bridge? Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that also carries. Next item under motions in general business will be a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-one proposed tax levy collectible in twenty-twenty-two and two to set truth in taxation public The city council will need to certify the preliminary levy to the county on or before September thirty, twenty-twenty-one. The levy that the county adopts can only be decreased, the final levy, there will be no increases. As a result of the council workshop, council director staff prepared the proposed certified levy based on a proposed preliminary. Is that supposed to be twenty-two or twenty-one? Preliminary twenty-twenty-one budget or twenty-two? Twenty-twenty-two budget of nine million fifty thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. This amounts to a proposed levy increase of four million, no. Yeah, four.
A proposed levy of four million nineteen thousand?
Four million nineteen six hundred and ninety-eight is a four hundred thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollar increase from the twenty-twenty-one certified levy. Based on the tax capacity increasing, there is a two-point-three-seven-nine increase in city taxes. The levy is made up of the operating levy of three million seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-four, the swimming pool referendum levy of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, and the fire hall referendum levy of one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five. Then we'll have to make a truth in taxation meeting to be scheduled to present the proposed levy and budget to the public, receive their input. Staff has recommended that D and T be set for Tuesday, December seventh, six PM, with a continuation meeting if necessary at the regular council meeting on December fourteenth. All right, council action requested would be to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two proposed tax levy collectible in twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, next action would be set the truth in taxation public meeting for Tuesday, December seventh, at six PM. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Jeremiah seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item on the agenda is approval personnel policy updates. Personnel committee met on August twenty-fourth to review the suggested changes to personnel policy. Add, Juneteenth for the city's observed holidays, add Medicare reimbursement option for all full-time employees that are Medicare eligible. Offering this choice for Medicare-eligible employees and giving them the option to either stay on the current healthcare plan or get the Medicare reimbursement. Employees must have been covered by the city's medical coverage plan for the last two consecutive years prior to Medicare eligibility to be eligible for this reimbursement. Reimbursement is up to six hundred dollars per month and will begin in twenty-twenty-two. Reimbursement maximum monthly amount will be reviewed every two years unless an extreme disruption in the market warrants a timelier review. Once we have twenty full-time employees, Medicare-eligible employees will stay on the group health plan for federal Medicare guidelines. Boy, Carla, do you understand any of this? No, I'm talking to both Carla's. I'm talking to Carla Nelson and Carla. Our group's health plan will be primary and Medicare will be secondary. At that point, there's no extra cost for Medicare to the employee. Met with the union representatives on August thirty-first, got their approval with the addition to the personnel policy. Based on an average group healthcare premiums, the Medicare reimbursement option will be, will cost less than the traditional group insurance for city and have better coverage for the employee. Well, I sure hope there's some questions on this. But the action we're gonna be looking for when you get done with all your input is to adopt the updated language on resolution seventy-eight dash fourteen, a resolution establishing a personnel policy for the city of Sturridgeville, Minnesota. You getting into that, Craig?
No, I had to sit through this meeting the other day, remember? So I've already been through it, but yeah. But I have to admit, and it's not a shot at you, Carla, 'cause you didn't put it together, but where do they come up with this stuff where it's different for a town, a city of less than twenty than it is for a city of more than twenty? And some of it just seems arbitrary.
Well, I, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Carla.
Well, what I would say is when it comes to Medicare and Medicaid, which is what I thought I heard you speaking of, of course, that's the federal government.
Yep.
Yeah, this is federal.
This is federal.
Yeah.
You know, I can't speak to the federal, well, you wouldn't want.
I just, I don't understand where the ideals come from, is what I'm saying.
No, I will not take on that jurisdiction. But I know it is, I will just say, government money always has government strings and federal government particularly. And the further the government is away from the people, the more difficult it often is to understand.
We can believe that.
Well, anybody up here got any other questions or discussion?
I have to throw my hat, the trust, Carla Strain category here, and the fact that she followed up with our recommendation, met with the unions, they're comfortable with it, you know that they would be digging in for every penny on that that they could, so. With that, I'll make the motion to go forward with it.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Got a lot of motions general business, maybe. Mayor staff consult reports. Better get that, Lexi, it could be something important. Might be something from the federal government, wanna straighten out that last. Tonight, the city would like to send our sympathies out to the families of Dottie Jones, Frank Dewey, Marv Summer, Paul Tally, Lori Gertis, Lucille Ferguson, Shirley Dickey, and Mike Seuss. I don't know, but I was just discussing that with Cheryl today. It's been an awful rough summer here in Sturridgeville this year, it seems like it's. We've had a lot of our good, good people pass on. Congratulations, two of our area boys scouts have achieved their Eagle Award. Great job for Jackson Stirr, Stirr Hard, and Berkeley Ravenhurst. They've done a fantastic job. The one, Jackson, did the garbage receptacles. We saw them, they were great. Berkeley's was, what was his project again?
He didn't do anything.
This was with the severe disease.
Okay.
Did a great job doing it.
Good. Don't forget our trash and treasure days is this weekend, September seventeenth and eighteenth. Fall Festival is also September eighteenth. Sturridgeville Football Boosters Club and Fun Night is also September eighteenth. You can support that program by attending the Fun Night. They've got a good meal, there'll be a live and silent auction, a lot of fun. September twenty-fifth is Chicken Nick Night at the American Legion. That is always a delicious meal and it's something you won't wanna miss, it really is.
That's your favorite.
Huh?
That's your favorite.
Is it?
Yeah.
I thought your favorite was watching him get dunked in the dunking. And Sturridgeville Oktoberfest will be October second from six to eight P M at Two Brothers, and that's sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce. I have nothing else to add to that report. City administrator's report is in your packet. We'll get the less than the half shimmel, we won't even get a quarter shimmel 'cause Bill's not here tonight. Carla, anybody supposed to fill in for him? All right. Finance Director Carla, you gotta report?
Um, just, we're gonna keep moving forward on getting the final and tweak as we get more information on insurance. That's our biggest thing is trying to find out for the insurances. I'm just looking forward to all of that, so hopefully we can whittle it down from where we have it now. And just move forward.
All right, any questions for Carla? Thanks, Carla. Public Works Director?
On the reports in there, I'd like to point out that the guys finished up Downplay Courts. It's seated back down there where we tour the rotating wall out. Jeremiah, I encourage you guys to go down, take a look at it. I think it looks nice. Maintenance-wise, it's gonna be so much nicer to keep it open in that area down there. Uh, we got the benches placed today and the signs that we talked about will be built over the winter. We'll send them off to have them made and then we'll build the posts and the brackets for them and they'll be installed this spring. So that's kind of the way it'll sit for the winter down there now. The Jacksons, True Hard, did the garbage receptacles and they turned out so nice that in the price on those, uh, well, we've looked at receptacles, which we've had problems in our parks with birds dragging the garbage out and the neighbors, Charlie Bowles and them have complained some, that some of those areas, we may this winter, get our guys in downtime when it's snow or something like this winter and start building some of those ourselves 'cause they're half the price of buying and they did end up looking really nice. So I'd like to commend Jackson also, it was nice working with him, he did a great job. So, and then we do have one more Eagle Scout that is proposing a project to us, uh, but we're still working with the V M W Memorial Group to try and do something down in their park that he wants to do. We just don't know for sure what the project is yet. So, and that should be, other than that, it's, everything's moving along. We're getting projects wrapped up, you know, we're doing a good job of getting things seated back and moving forward.
Any questions for Sean or comments? The wall, truly good. Runes did a great job, you guys did a great job back on.
He is coming back to the wall, that we're not doing the growth, no, we're doing the rock itself, we're doing the growth, the color does, and he thinks he can get it to match up even better in the building. So he is coming back to touch that up and do that, yeah.
What he's trying to do is get it to match as close to city halls as we can make it look. Looks great out there, Jim. Anything else for the guys? Done, thanks, they're doing a great job. All right. City Engineer Jenna?
Great, um, update on this year's C I P. You may have noticed that we are waiting for the last lift of wear course on last year's portion of the project. With talking to the contractor, that is due to, um, the bituminous or the asphalt plant, they are currently doing a large contract for the airport, which is the wrong type of oil for our project and that project is slated to take approximately a month. So, um, our contractor is going to ask if they will honor our pricing for the oil we wanted with this other oil. The likelihood of that is not going to happen. So we are, do need to wait for the correct oil likely. So it will be October before the wear course, or can you put that?
They are two weeks into that month right now.
Yep.
So that month isn't starting for right now, they're two weeks into September.
And of course, as we know, weather depending on things. So if we end up getting a weaker rain, they can't pay at the airport in a rain and that's going to push things back again. Most asphalt plants in our area can only do two misses at a time, some will need one, so, um, it's part of the business right now. So that is our wait. And in regards to cleaning up behind the sidewalks, getting sawed in on this year's portion of the project, they are waiting on the power poles to be removed and the the piece panels that are missing to be placed before that happens. Um, the power company, so Peoples is waiting for the residents or businesses to make the transfer before they can take the power poles down. So right now, we are in the hands of those property owners in that area in order to get that portion of the project completed. So that's where we stand on that one. With the future twenty twenty-three C I P, did get an email and sent through a meeting about safe routes to school funding and they are going to be looking for applications for safe routes to school funding here coming up in October. And I do propose that we apply to get some of the funding for our sidewalks or what we end up deciding on for the twenty twenty-three projects. So that's Fifth Avenue, um, in between Chuck Highway thirty and six going down to Bonner. And just utilize some of that funding. This is state-funded safe routes to school funding, so it would not change our obligations of contracting as we are proposing to use our state M S A S funds for the roadway. So they can go hand in hand together. But that is one, one thing I'd like to apply for and try to get. The funding that can be applied for here has to be used in twenty-two or twenty-three, so.
Is that funded just a dollar amount or is it, you gotta have it on both sides of the street or one side? Or is it just a dollar amount, you can do what you want with it?
Um, it's a, it's a dollar amount for what you need. So, um, if we did decide to do one side of the street and not the other, but wanted, looked into it and needed a crossing, um, you look at the street crossing and perhaps the R F Bs, the, um, the flashing lights that the kids could put a push button and then get the flashing lights going when they're crossing, not at an intersection, that could fund that type of an improvement too.
If you do that outside of the street where you gotta do a lot of retaining walls, is that included in that funding too, or?
That, it's for all construction necessary to put in the improvement.
One other question, yeah, apply for that. But one other question. That was by our counselor and I think I asked you once, like, you gave me an answer, can't remember. That one power pole on this project that we poured around.
Yes.
Reason?
The reason for that that pole poured around is that there is what we call a par, pedestrian access road between the top curve and that power pole. It's a main power pole that could not be removed and also to be moved back, there are a lot of other utilities behind it. So that power pole just cannot go away. Questions?
Can I answer your question?
Brett, look like you have questions?
It was looked at in the field.
You looked at it?
No, but, sorry, sorry, Sean, but by Peoples, Sean and Derek.
The Peoples is the, it's their power pole.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Everyone's deemed it, it is handicap, meets eighty-eight because it's still four foot wide here.
It just looks goofy, I mean.
It, it does look goofy and it's one they could not move.
I mean, the power company has rights with theirs.
Yep.
We don't control the power company, so they're the ones that deem that it had to stay.
All right, any other questions for Jenna? She's got a lot to do. All right. No Nate tonight, no library director, we got Fire Chief Vance here, you gotta report, Vance?
I do. I gotta chief.
What are you, Abe Lincoln, Abe Lincoln?
Sitting here all night, making more notes. Call volume for August, we had sixty-one calls, ten of them were fire-related, fifty-one were EMS-related. The call volume continues to go up every month. Uh, we did have two structure fires last month. Uh, had a structure fire at the trailer park, uh, totaled one of the trailers and then the Harris Farm lost a bar. So they have to be on vacation, saw the fire on their, their security cameras and called it in from way up north. Interesting little thing, so. Uh, Fire Commission Week is the week of October third. So the Fireman's Breakfast will be October third at the Legion as it has been except for last year. Open house will be October sixth. Uh, we take inappropriate steps to address COVID issues that we can, uh, yeah. Joya is working with me and the Fire Department on a grant from Peoples Energy Co-op to get to replace our four gas monitors. Our monitors that we currently have are at end of service life. Uh, they're getting to be relatively difficult and expensive to maintain. Uh, Joya found a grant for us, uh, so it's a two-thousand-dollar grant, well, spent six hundred dollars into it, but that'll be able to replace our three existing monitors that are at end of life. So she put a lot of work and effort into that for us and we'll be submitting that, uh, grant here soon. Uh, last week, I sat down and completed our I S O audit. Uh, this happens every five years. Uh, this is the second time I've gone through it. Some of the council members, Nate and I have been here, but, uh, last time we went through that I S O audit, we were at I S O rating five. That I S O rating has an impact on our insurance, both for commercial and for residential properties. Uh, I made a commitment to the council to try and get that from a five to a four, uh, at this next audit. It looks like we're gonna be close, I'm not sure a hundred percent we're gonna make the four, but I'll have the report here soon for you where it's at. Uh, the report will have, uh, details on what we need to do to move forward. A lot of it is, uh, some things that we can institute in the Fire Department to reduce that. Sean's crew with water, uh, is doing phenomenal, we're doing great with that. There's one thing we could do there at the Fire Department, I think you can help Sean with, uh, for some water modeling near the summer, just some fetal testing.
Pressure testing, yeah.
Pressure testing, we can look at that and get some extra points. But if we're not at a four this time, uh, I know that I waited a call even a year, uh, let's make modifications and we do the modifications for a year, should be able to get that down. Uh, it won't have a huge impact on our residential rates, but it can have up to eight percent reduction of our commercial rates. So it could have a, a good impact with, uh, our local businesses here if we can get that down to a four, which I'm very confident we can. If we're not already there, uh, we'll be able to do it within the next twelve, twenty-four months. Uh, Department has completed specifications on the new fire engine that we've been talking about this year. Uh, just kind of a quick reminder, the truck that we're gonna replace is a thirty-year-old engine. Uh, we will sell Rescue One, uh, we will retain that thirty-year-old engine as a, uh, reserved unit. The reason we're gonna keep it as a reserved unit is it's only worth about five thousand dollars on the market, so it's worth more for rolling stock for us than for, uh, to sell outright. Additionally, we get extra points from I S O to have a reserve unit, uh, in-house and it does meet our obligation for state's, uh, insurance and stuff like that to have a truck in town all the time, so it will just help us with that a little bit more. The last thing I've got is, I think, uh, most people know, uh, we had a Lucas device donated to us. This is an automatic CPR device. It keeps us from having to do compressions. The CPR, we want to start out doing manual compressions, but we can put this on and that device will do compressions for us. So it's about sixteen, sixteen thousand dollar donation, uh, that we're, we're donating to the city. Uh, the N C A S has these units, uh, but we're getting, we're receiving a larger delay on N C A S getting to town, they're having, uh, some issues with staffing and getting stuff, plus their call logs going up also. Uh, so it was a very generous donation to the department, uh, something that we'll put, uh, to use uh, as already in service, we just haven't had an opportunity to use again, so. Uh, great donation, uh, for the family to us for that. That's all I got.
Any questions for Chief? You're a little more relaxed than the last time I saw you, Chief, everybody must've got off to college finally now.
Yeah, everything was fine.
All right, takes us to pool director's report. If you haven't looked at the report, we had quite a busy summer. The average daily attendance over June, July, August, September was three hundred and thirty-seven per day. There was forty days of swim lessons with four hundred per day. The patrons that went through our pool this year was forty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five. So it's a busy place. They did a fantastic job. All right, that'll take us to committee, commission, and board reports. Chamber of Commerce, nothing in the pack tonight, E D A H R A.
Meeting next Tuesday.
Meeting next Tuesday. I'd like to remind each and every one of you counselors, if you'd like to, we're, they're doing a, uh, community survey at Cabin Coffee once a month. Julia usually posts it, Carla knows what date it is.
So they're gonna do, um, so the, the second Tuesday of every month.
That's what's gonna be, second Tuesday, nine o'clock.
The second Tuesday of every month from nine to ten at Cabin Coffee. They will be, there will be different topics that will be hit on each month. We had gotten a grant from Smith and that's why we're able to fund it and do it. And at the E D A meeting on Tuesday night, we'll get the approval from them, trying to figure out exactly what all of those topics will be and bring them forward.
I went to the first one today, Cheryl.
Um, should remind everybody, if you haven't filled out your comprehensive plan survey, community survey to get that done.
And that's what we were handing out today there, was the comprehensive plan survey.
We had a meeting with, um, S E H today and we're getting some in, but we'd like to see a lot more.
Works pretty good over there, you offer free coffee and free food and they show up. Had a good turnout today. All right, finance?
Nothing.
Nothing? Library?
Nothing.
What do you mean, nothing?
We already had our meeting last.
Did you go to this one?
Yeah, I never miss.
Park Board, that isn't what we heard.
Uh, Park Board met last night. Um, we only had two board members, so we couldn't have a full meeting, but we did have a large number of guests, um, that came to talk about, um, potentially, bringing back the skate park. And our, um, special honored guest was me, Jimmy John King, so.
Feel like Rodney Dangerfield, you have no respect up here. Personnel?
Minutes are in there.
Minutes are in there. Line zoning?
Uh, the minutes are in here and we went over a bunch of stuff today and then we meet, uh, October maybe. And then we meet October maybe.
October's a busy month too, good.
Yeah, we're growing.
Public Safety? Nothing, Jason. Public Works?
Nothing.
Ready? Nothing. ROCOG, minutes of July are in there. Our Transit Advisory Committee ran out on us, I don't know where he went. I usually wait for his report. Communications?
He skipped Stu 180.
Uh huh.
He skipped Stu 180.
Oh my God, he did. Stu 180.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. You got a League of Minnesota Cities letter in there, if you'd like to read through that. And that brings us to our open mic. And I'll go through the description quick, but Carla, we're gonna have you at the open mic, I guess.
Right.
City Council welcomes and encourages participation from the community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules, so no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We'd also request that your comments be limited to four minutes. Carla would possibly give you more than four minutes, maybe. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the City Council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Carla Nelson, your State Senator. Very pleased to join you tonight and very, it's just a real honor to work for you at the State Capitol. And I want to thank all of you for your great work here. And it's, it's good for me to, to see you and, and to listen to all of those individual reports and all of the dedication that you have to making Stewartville a great community. It is a great community, love Stewartville, love, love representing Stewartville. But, but thank you, and it's great to partner with you at the state. And so in a little dialogue, I, I mentioned something that I, I think is so true. The government that is closest to the people really has the pulse and, and does so much work. And so while the federal government is far away and we can all talk about what we like and don't like about what is and isn't happening out in Washington DC. I'm glad to represent you at the Minnesota State Capitol. So this year was a budget year, as you know, we set a two-year budget. This, that was our job here in 2021. It was our second year of operating in COVID, much like you have. And then it certainly changed how we, how we do things and made it even harder, I think, and somewhat, to be able to work together and to hear from our constituents. But I will tell you, we approved a comprehensive bipartisan budget. It was a $52 billion budget. It empowers Minnesotans, empowers their families, workers, funds our schools, invest in public safety, which personally, I think is job number one in any government. And provide support for our vulnerable family members. So I'm the Chair of the State Tax Committee in the Senate. And so my job is to really work towards making sure that our tax structure would empower Minnesotans and help us towards economic recovery. I'm glad to say that we did pass a billion dollars of tax relief. It was a struggle. That was on our position in the Senate, I thought that was important. So, just so you know, the Department of Revenue just, I believe it was yesterday, took a little prodding to figure out how those refunds were gonna get back to people. There were 400 and, or 550,000 Minnesotans who would got tax refunds because of the tax bill that we passed in the Minnesota Legislature. But of course, Tax Day was before the end of the legislature on April 16th. So those tax returns were already in for 2020. But the department now was able to work through about half a million, 550,000 Minnesotans who needed tax refunds. Most of those were done internally. So that meant Minnesotans did not have to file amendments, which would have been costly and would have even delayed things further. The, I talked to the Commissioner the last few days, the Department of Revenue Commissioner, trying to figure out why those refunds hadn't gone out, obviously this had passed three months ago. It didn't take them that long to go through and figure out who was eligible and how could the department adjust those refunds. They started going out here this week. They're starting slowly, about 1,000 refunds per week, just to kind of monitor and see how that's all going. Taxes, as you know, are complicated, they, you do something here and it might affect something over there. So, but by, by October, they'll be doing 50,000 refunds per week. There's about 8,000 Minnesotans, so you might hear from some of them, whose tax returns were more complicated. And they got a letter from the Department of Revenue saying, you will need to file an amendment. So that was a big, actually it was a big piece this year. And that, a lot of, a lot of that was providing tax relief in those PPP forgiven loans and pandemic unemployment insurance. I think it was a long overdue getting that out, but I'm glad, I'm glad that's on the way. A couple of things for, just so you know, there are, there's an inordinate amount of money coming from the federal government. $15 billion, just with a B, has already come to the state of Minnesota. And it's important, I believe, that we, we monitor, we watch that, we have accountability and transparency. But what I'd like you to do is watch for the grants that are coming out. There's significant amounts of grants coming out. There are new grant rounds opening up, kind of on a continual timeline. The funding that's already come to our state will be coming and is appropriated now, already appropriated now, $15 billion, and will be spendable through 2026. So for the next few years, there's going to be this massive infusion of, of federal dollars. My hope is that we use it to leverage, it's one-time money, so you never want to use one-time money for ongoing expenses. That's a disaster. But hopefully using this money to leverage future growth. And one of, some of the grants that were just, just ended, but now they're in the second round of granting, are for things that I know are important for this area, broadband and childcare and workforce development. Those are things that I'm hearing across the district, the state, and, and here as well. So just know, reach out to me as you hear some of those grants. Many of them went through Smith, particularly on the childcare grants, they've done a great job for us in, in the past. You might want to know about the K-12 funding, although we have a school board that does that. I just want you to know that it was, once again, historic funding for our schools. And it was a record of $20.98 billion over the next two academic years. That's from the state. When I was, when I was Education Chair up until this past year, when I was promoted to Tax Chair, even during that time, there was $2 billion of federal funding that came to our Minnesota schools through COVID. Additional funding that wasn't expected. So Stewartville, just so you have, because you all have same constituents who want to know, Stewartville received an additional, over the projected increase, $705,844 in additional funding.
That's the school district.
That's the school district. About $335 more per student for 2022. And then in 2023, that funding will also carry over. And there will be an additional $399,000, $190 more per student. So that's the school, the school district. And then there's about 17,000 one-time special education funding. You might be interested in the frontline worker support. That's for frontline workers, our first responders, healthcare workers. Just so you know, there's about 1.3 million critical workers in our state that were deemed critical workers. There's $250 million to, from the federal government to determine how to pay that hero's pay. Currently, there's been a little bit of a standstill. The frontline workers group didn't get their report to us by September 6th because they don't agree. Some would like to give additional funding to all 1.3 million critical workers, whether they work remotely, had an option to work remotely, had, were unemployed, unemployment insurance, or not. And others want to target more those who were, didn't have an option to work remote, didn't receive pandemic unemployment insurance, and were in those high-risk areas like healthcare, emergency services, those type of things. So we'll see where that goes. Just so you know, because I know you all watch those, those numbers very carefully, if the one proposal was done, which was $1.3 million, $1,500 each for everyone, that's a $2 billion price tag. The price tag we have is 250 million. So will be some work left to do that. We do hope that gets done quickly. Other important things, the Department of Revenue just released our revenue increases, continues to increase above projections. And it did in the last month as well, that's revenue coming into the state, tax revenue. And it's about 6.6% over what was projected so far. So, quite frankly, our budget's in pretty good shape. And like I said, we've had significant infusions of federal, federal dollars. So I just want to thank you. And please know, reach out to me, senator sen.carla.nelson@senate.nelson. And then, any questions, particularly if I can help you with any, like, any grants, if you have any questions.
I have, sorry, I just had a quick question for that, for the emergency workers, does that count as volunteers?
I believe it does. I, I should check, it depends on if they were deemed critical workers, I would assume they are. But it could be that the Chief, Fire Chief has better handle on it.
It's not clear yet.
Oh, it's.
I was just, I was just curious.
Oh.
It's not clear yet.
Since Stewartville's volunteer just longer?
Yes, yes. There are some issues that aren't clear.
No, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of issues that are clear, which is why we don't have that report even. But also, there's been some, there's a shakeup at the Capitol. The Senate Majority Leader Giselka announced he's running for governor. So last week, the Senate Majority elected a new Majority Leader, that's Senator Jeremy Miller. He's from Winona, I think it's good we have someone from southeast Minnesota in the Majority Leader position. So, so we're glad about that. Over on the other side of the aisle, the DFL, the Democrat Farm Labor Party, their Minority Leader stepped down on the same day as Senator Giselka did as a Majority Leader. And just last night, they elected a new Minority Leader, and that is Senator Melissa Branson. So that's kind of the, the latest as far as personnel at the Capitol. So any other, any other questions?
One thing Greg's always concerned about is the farmers.
Yes, do you want to know about that?
Yeah.
Do you have some ideas?
He gets plenty of free stuff for it.
Oh, you're just goading. Okay, I will tell you, there's nothing to concern us though about the drought in our ag community. And I could spend some time with my tax committee staff, looking at what are some things that we could do. Now fortunately since then, and I'll be glad to speak to those if you really want me to, but I know you've been here a long time, but what I will say is fortunately since then, we have had some significant rain here. But the state has been that lucky.
You're correct. One thing I'd like to do is personally thank you, Senator Nelson. At the height of all this pandemic, when we were short of masks and other supplies, you found us a supplier for them and helped the Fire Department out immensely and all the rest of us. And you, you've worked hard for this community and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We will like you to keep looking at, twisting arms about 15th Avenue out there, getting some money from Department of Transportation for that.
I know that, I've already visited with the new engineer in District 6. We'll follow up with another meeting.
Good.
But he is aware, and he was aware before I got to him, so obviously it's.
We keep bothering him, yeah.
So Mayor, Mayor, just to know, we had an issue at the state level, both for regional, for the fire service. Carla was very helpful on it, us working through that, not only us, but Rochester, the Volunteer Department. So she's always been very receptive of us calling her directly, working through issues, giving us guidance. So she's nothing but beneficial for this Fire Department.
We thank you very much.
Thank you, I mean, that means a lot to me. And I will say, you are well represented here in, in all areas, so, good government.
Well, we thank you, Carla, we really do, for all you do for this.
Great, great, thank you so much.
Now watch this, you're gonna like this. Final motion of the evening, motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, you adjourn.